First of all, let me express my gratitude. Being local leaders for this past year, honestly, I can't imagine how challenging it is. Because you woke up that day when the governor declared the emergency and literally the world changed a little over a year ago. But just the vivid detail I recall is that it was in March and I was heading out to the airport in Washington to take a 10:30 flight home, and it's usually packed. And I got a phone call and it was American Airlines. And they never called me. And the question was, Congressman, are you still planning on returning to Vermont? And I was bewildered that they were inquiring. I said, well, I am. And they said, well, as soon as you get here, we're ready to go. I was the only person on the plane. The week before it had been packed. And that's what happened. And when you woke up, when Mayor LaRere woke up, President Whitcomb woke up, and everybody woke up, suddenly we were in a different world. And, you know, just think of, just remember back what that meant for your restaurants downtown, your businesses who had no idea they were going to survive. And, you know, it was a question as to what the federal government was going to do. And we're the, that's the only governmental entity that has the fiscal flexibility and capacity to respond. But you guys had to really hold it together. And it doesn't matter what your politics were then. Everybody was faced with the health threat of the virus. And everybody was faced with the social impacts and the economic impacts of the virus. So I just wanted to express to you my gratitude and appreciation for the leadership you all have provided. I am happy that there's been a good solid federal response, not that it sees all of the pain, but it's been essential in alleviating it. That first legislation we passed that over a year ago was a strong bipartisan, almost $2 trillion bill that helped out especially with our small businesses with individuals with getting us started on vaccine research. Now, we're in a good place. You know, I think Vermont's done a very, very good job on doing the protocols like a social distancing, wearing a mask, the things that the governor's been very, very good about encouraging us to do. And our numbers are a lot lower than most other places. But we still have a ways to go. Vaccines are, we're going to get out of this. We can see the end, but we still have a ways to go. So we've got to keep our guard up, but also economically, it's still fragile. So what I wanted to report to you on is that $1.9 trillion American Rescue package and what it specifically means to Rutland. I mean, there is the money that goes to the vaccine distribution. That'll be a federal responsibility, not a state or a local. There's the money that goes to individuals, those $1,400 checks. There's the unemployment that is continued for a period of time. There's the money that goes to small businesses that try to keep them afloat so we don't leave them behind when we reopen fully. But there is money that goes specifically to our towns and cities in Vermont. And we had a big debate in Washington about whether to include in this rescue package money that goes to Vermont and other states and money that goes to the local communities. And at the end of the day, while this ended up being a partisan vote, a lot of my Republican colleagues were very, very much in favor of including aid for our local communities. In the second debate we had was who should be deciding how to spend it. And the way we came down, which was very much something I was in favor of, as well as Senator Leahy and Senator Sanders, is to give maximum discretion to our local leaders. And that position is based on a view that there's a partnership here. The federal government really is the only governmental entity that has the fiscal flexibility and capacity to step up financially. But who has the best capacity to make decisions about how that money should be used to help the well-being of the citizens of their community? And our view is that really it's the folks in Rutland who've been elected by Rutlanders that are better to make that decision than folks in Washington. So let me get to what you are going to be receiving. Rutland is going to get a, Rutland City is going to get a total of $4.4 million. Okay? 4.4 million. You receive that in two tranches. The one within 60 days of when President Biden signed the bill, and that was a couple of weeks ago. And then the balance is a year from that date, a year from your first payment. Rutland Town, by the way, your neighbor, of course, is going to receive a total of 1.2 million. And the district, the school district, the unified school district will receive 11.7 million dollars. Now, I mentioned how it'll be paid out, 60 days and then a year from that in two equal tranches. And the money has to be spent, but you've got flexibility here as well by the end of 2024. So you basically have three years within which to use that. The money has to be spent on COVID-related expenses, but that's somewhat broadly defined. And it can be used to help businesses. It can be used for some capital projects like water and sewer and broadband. It can be used in conjunction with some of your local service organizations, like a food shelf that's providing for the well-being of the citizens of Rutland. So there's a fair amount of flexibility here as long as it is broadly incorporated into addressing the impacts of COVID on our communities. The, you know, this is, this is borrowed money. You know, sometimes people say, Peter, you borrowed the money. And you know what? That's true. So there's no getting around it. But many of us believed that the absolute urgency of avoiding a catastrophic depression that could have occurred had there been no federal intervention merited the unique borrowing to get money into the hands of people, into businesses and into our communities and schools so that we could have an economy that was more than on life support when people were fully vaccinated and we get back to, quote, "normal." I think we're approaching that day. I think the governor is hoping July 4th we could have what we would regard as a traditional July 4th holiday. So my view has been that, as I said, the federal government does have to step in. And my hope is that once we get to a vaccinated place where we can be out and be normal, we're going to be in a position to have a self-sustaining recovery where people are back at work paying taxes and we're starting to pay off what it is we borrowed for this. And I have approached this from the standpoint that it would be better to err on the side of doing a little bit too much than to do far too little. Now, the final thing I want to say is this. You have enormous responsibility. You know, the good news is money is going to come and help you make decisions and implement decisions. But, you know, none of our communities have had this type of infusion of money from the federal government. And your leadership, the decisions you make, is going to be extremely important to the well-being of folks in Rutland, the people you represent. And the wisdom of your decisions are going to have an impact far beyond the next few years and have an impact on the future of your incredibly wonderful city of Rutland. So that's my report. And I thank you so much for allowing me to be at your meeting virtually. I can't wait. None of us can wait till we get back to see each other in person, see our families having normal holidays. My family, we usually have a big, big Easter. It was just marketed to me yesterday. We had a nice time, but we missed our family. So President Whitcomb, let me stop there and I'm glad to proceed as you wish. I know you have a lot of business to do.
Thank you, Congressman Welch. I guess I'll ask members of the board, do you have any specific questions for the congressman?
So this is the mayor. Can I just speak up very quickly and want to thank Congressman Welch, Peter, for you coming on and, you know, telling us your really good story tonight and some good news and kind of a sea of bad news this last year to help us support our recovery and post-COVID life here in the city of Rutland. You're right, we do have a wonderful city and we're very fortunate and have some terrific people who are out there volunteering and supporting this community. So thanks for taking the time to come on and we'll be talking soon.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor LaRere. Alderman DePoy, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks for being here, Congressman. We appreciate it very much. I was wondering about the SALT caps that we have been talking so much about, the state and local tax exemptions. Are those going to be rolled back? Are you going to be able to get that through in the next stimulus bill, do you think?
Well, this Northeast states, Vermont very much included, got whacked a bit when we lost that SALT deduction. That was part of, as you remember, the President Trump's tax cut. His tax cut was $1.9 trillion. And one of the ways that he, quote, "paid for" that was to eliminate the SALT deduction. And that's had a significant impact on high-tax states, frankly, you know, so Vermont, New York, New Jersey. And I did favor restoring that SALT deduction on your federal taxes that would give a bit of, would give us some help here in Vermont. It is not part of the president's proposal. And the question, so this is going to be debated, it's very much part of, it's very much part of the infrastructure package. So to be determined is the answer.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Thank you, Congressman Welch. Are there any additional questions for the congressman? Alderman Neary.
Thank you. And thank you, Congressman Welch, for coming out and seeing us today. Really appreciate it. And for your work on this piece of legislation, I think it's going to be tremendously helpful. One thing that, you know, a city like us will need in implementing this type of large sum of money will be some guidance in a plan, especially paying for potential infrastructure projects. Can you let us know, you know, when you might expect that we'll receive information on exactly how these funds can be spent and if there will be principles for decision-making?
The answer is yes. I mean, what happens in these big pieces of legislation, so we pass it and then a lot of the agencies have to write the rules. And then a lot of times there's conflict about whether those rules comply with congressional intent. And we saw that with the Payroll Protection Plan. And we were very active responding to businesses telling us what some of the hassles were that they had to endure. So on the call with us tonight is Rebecca Ellis, who's my state director. And we are going to be available to you and in real time as information comes out and you have questions, we'll do all we can to be of assistance to you in resolving them. And I know that's true with Senator Leahy's office and with Senator Sanders' office as well. We want to make sure that you get the full benefit of this. And when you have a good idea, we're going to bend over backwards to try to make certain that fits within the requirements of the rules. But I think you guys know your needs. You really do. I think even though this is a large sum of money, the needs in Rutland are great. I mean, even the infrastructure. I remember Mayor LaRere, you and I talked some time ago, you've got some pipes that go back to the Civil War. You're making progress. I think the last time you and I were together, Mayor, was down by the school and there was a project underway there, the ongoing improvements that you're making. And that really matters. That really, really, really matters. And, you know, the one thing I do want to say, this is a political statement, in a small P use of that word, not a partisan one. If we've seen anything from this COVID experience, it's that when something bad happens, the suffering is universal. It doesn't matter who you voted for. You could get COVID. It doesn't matter what town you live in, you could get it. And the economic anxiety and the emotional anxiety that people have had to live with has been universal. You know, red state, blue state, Republican, Democrat, independent, just doesn't matter. And what is so important in these COVID relief packages, you know, we can debate whether the number is right, whether the allocation is right, but everything in here is going to people who fit the, who need it and towns that need it. And it's not based on whether that is a Republican or Democratic town. And the universality here of the suffering and the economic challenge requires the universal response. And now we have an opportunity at the local, the state, and the federal level through leadership on our elected boards to use that money wisely for the benefit of our communities. And if we succeed in that, I have some hope that that'll restore many of the mistrusted citizens have in their government. And the reason that's important is that I think trust is so essential to the well-being of our democracy. And I say that whatever your political point of view is, at the end of the day, trust is so profoundly important. And I know you know that in Rutland. You know, you're a small community, you're a community of neighbors, and you help one another. And so, but this is your task and you've got some tools here, financial tools, to help you in that effort. So, Mayor, I wish you and the board really good luck in the wise use of these funds that are going to be arriving soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Welch. Any additions from the board? I'm saying none. Oh, sorry, Alderman Davis.
If I may. First of all, thank you, Congressman Welch. We appreciate your assistance and the funding. And I agree, we have a wonderful community and lots of needs that we'll put that to good use. So I guess my next question is to the mayor. In order for the board to have some involvement, I know it's early, but do you feel that we could maybe send it to, like, Finance Committee just so it has a placeholder until we have a discussion in regards to the projects and then can refer to you?
Yeah, that would be fine. I don't have any problem with that. We'll have internal discussions and then, you know, it's going to be a joint effort, obviously, to figure out how to best spend that money, but a referral is fine.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll move to refer, at least for a placeholder, to the Finance
Second.
Have a motion that has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on this referral to the Finance Committee? If not, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 As opposed? Are there any additional questions for the congressman?
Well, if not, I want to thank everybody. Our office, Rebecca and I, we really look forward to working with you. And I know that's true with the folks in Senator Sanders and Senator Leahy's office as well. Good luck. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We are still under outside the rail. Mayor LaRere, nope, sorry. We're still under outside the rail. Are there any other communications from members outside the rail who wish to address the board on items not on the agenda? I'm hearing nothing. So we are now moving on to communications from the mayor. Mayor LaRere. First up, Merrill nominations to remove from the table, appointed officers. All right, we have a motion that has been seconded to remove from the table the appointed officers that were recommended at the previous meeting. Any discussion or debate? Hearing none. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 As opposed? All right, motion carries. So we have removed from the table the appointments offered to us at the last meeting. Now, all of you should have received an email link, I believe, on Friday, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Blumer. There would have been one test email and one official ballot. If there's anyone who knows that they don't have that, would they please raise their hand Okay, not seeing anyone's hand, what I'll ask you to do is to go, oh, sorry, Alderman Gru... Go ahead, Alderman Gruzzo.
I was talking to Henry about that. I got something here, but it doesn't look like a ballot. I did get the test ballot and I responded to it. But I got Matt Blumer's secret ballots for mayor nomination. And I click on it. You will receive two emails from whatever. I did not receive the rail one. I just received the test ballot here, which I responded to.
Attorney Blumer, is there any way to resend it?
Or is it in the same email?
Sammy, check your spam folder. Mine went to spam.
I don't know if it might be in the same one, though.
It would have two emails that came essentially, one right after the other. And it could very well have your spam folder.
Yes. Right. Check your spam folder. That's where my, both of mine ended up.
The subject line, Sam, is "Official Ballot April 5."
All right.
I just resend as well, so that might give you two chances.
Just got one at 7:24.
I forwarded one, Sam. Check that. That may be.
You just forwarded one?
I think, Attorney Blumer, did you just forward one?
I have to do it through the system, but I put Sam's email in and hit resend, so it would have, it would have come through right about that time.
I click on it, nothing happens, though. But let me see. Here we go.
All right, for other members of the board, if you do have it, you can enter in and cast So while we're doing this, Mayor LaRere, do you want to speak to your other nominations? And we'll circle back to this in a couple of minutes if it still hasn't worked.
Yep. Yep, I can do that. I have a couple of things I want to talk about. So on the agenda, you have, it included a memo from me with a list of nominees and appointments to five positions on the Planning Commission, one for the double RIA Board, Rutland Redevelopment Authority Board, and our new, hopefully new zoning administrator that has said yes to accepting the job, and I'm submitting his name also tonight. I have sent along resumes on two of those prospective appointees, those nominees. And if the board needs any other information or background on any of the others, and most of the other ones are known quantities, please feel free to contact me sometime in the next few days, and I would be glad to get you any information that you might need on those. So if I could, I would ask, as the normal protocol is to have those nominees, nominations tabled to the next meeting.
All right, we have a motion to table the nominations and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 As opposed? Motion carries. And Mayor, you sent Sarah Roy and Andrew, can you say his last name so I don't butcher it?
Yeah, Sternstein, I believe it is.
Okay.
Yes, those are the two I sent. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. I do have a couple of other quick things I wanted to touch on, and then you can roll back. So, yep. One is, unfortunately, talking a little bit about the incident over the weekend down at the Quality Inn. And really, I guess more importantly, not the specific instance of all that, unfortunately, a young man lost his life. But the bigger, the question is, an ongoing series of issues in the state housing scores the folks at the hotels here in the city and unfortunately throughout the state. As you know, it's been causing some issues, which in, at the beginning, were fairly minor nuisance calls, the police being down there on a number of occasions, our building and zoning people being down there. It has now escalated. And it's escalated to the point of lives being lost. And that is just unacceptable. It's just, it's a problem that needs to be addressed. It's a huge problem. It's a huge problem for this community and for the state. I've been in contact with the, our Rutland County delegation. I'm going to appear before them in a couple of weeks. I've been on the phone with the governor's office today, spoke with the chief of staff. There's a meeting coming up in the next couple of days with the interested parties, the Agency of Human Services. And we're going to have a discussion about, hopefully, changing the policy and changing the situation, not just in that hotel, but throughout the state, but in particular that one facility. It's out of hand. It's just totally unacceptable and they have heard my concerns and this community's concerns. You know, we've been promised supervision down there, support, and we just, we're just not seeing that. You know, I could try to close down the facility, do it, find a way, whether through health concerns, but that's not going to alleviate the situation where these people are going to go. So we're going to have a series of discussions this week. I hope to have more information for everyone in the very near future. But again, I want everybody to know that I'm taking this extremely seriously, as community is, and I will be in touch with you as soon as I can when I have more information. So that's one issue. The second issue, which is not quite so dire, but has become, come to the forefront again, and I will just caveat this with a couple of the aldermen have already spoke to me about this, but it's shopping carts. Shopping carts are becoming, once again, an unacceptable issue around the city. It's making the city look awful. Alderman Clifford spoke to me about this a couple of weeks ago. I have since had meetings with the management down at Price Chopper and also with an assistant manager at Walmart. Price Chopper has responded very positively. They, in the last week or two, have collected at least 80 carts, probably more, and they're going out on a regular basis picking them up. Unfortunately, I haven't gotten that kind of response from Walmart. And, you know, I resist, I hesitate to try to call people out. That's really not a good way to do business, but these carts are all over the place. They're becoming a hazard in the streets and we are coming up on the spring. The snow's gone. It's just unacceptable. So I'm mentioning this to the Board of Aldermen. We do have an ordinance in place that just doesn't seem to have any teeth. I'd like to revisit the issue and have the board take a look at it and see if there's some way to address the situation, which is... and see if there's some way to address, uh, the situation, which has got out of hand. So, um, if the board so chooses, uh, some sort of a referral, either charter an ordinance or wherever you see deemed, uh, would, is what I'm asking.
Alderman Davis.
So I'll move to refer to charter ordinance committee.
Second.
All right, for the motion.
I was just going to say that they seem to be always be in the same location. At least I noticed that, that, and, um, I, I know folks have a difficult time. They either don't have a vehicle or for some reason maybe don't choose to take the bus, or maybe they're limited in packages on the bus. I'm, I'm not sure what the bus's rules are. Might be something we want to look into. But there, I think there's got to be some education to these, these folks as well about, um, these carts and not to be removing them from the properties that they're on, because you can drive, I'll say Park Avenue, for example, and they're always in front of the same apartment. So, um, I think there's some work to be done on both sides.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. So we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any other discussion, debate, questions? If not, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
So, if I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so, um, Mayor Laird, you do have, you spoke about the zoning administrator and the redevelopment authority, um, but the planning commission, you have a number of folks on. I'm assuming those are tabling as well?
Yeah, the, the whole, uh, the whole list of folks, I mentioned that in, in my remarks. So, yes, all five for the planning commission, the, uh, Board of Redevelopment Authority and the zoning administrator, so all of them, yes.
So, we have Patrick Griffin, Giffen, Griffin, excuse me, Alvin Fiegel, Rebecca Mattis, Dave O'Brien, and Sarah Roy. Thank you.
Correct.
Are there any further questions for the mayor? All right, hearing and seeing none, we are on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or, uh, Alderman Franco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to go back on that really quickly and ask the mayor if it's possible for all of his nominations, if, if he's able to send a, a packet with resumes. I know we received a couple of them, um, but I would appreciate having more background information on the qualifications for all of the nominations.
And I will be glad to provide that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before I move on, just anything else for Mayor Laird? All right, we are on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? We have none. Wonderful. So we're on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Up first, Brennan Duffy, Biop Emergency Program. This is page two of your packet.
Thank you, Matt. Hello, everyone. Um, so we have, as you are aware, made a number of loans through our Biop Emergency Loan Fund to businesses that were struggling last year, uh, through the COVID pandemic and with the state mandated protocols. Uh, it's a year later, and we're finding that a number of businesses are still in a very, uh, tenuous spot and struggling, uh, because most of those protocols have continued over the year. Um, so with these loans coming due for the one-year, $5,000 loan terms, we have considered a couple of different options, and this is in conjunction with Mary Markowski at the Treasurer's Office and the IRA Board that has had this, um, discussion over two of our meetings. And so in my memo, I have, uh, provided a couple, three different options really for the $5,000 loans that are going to be coming due in May and June. Uh, one of those would be just kind of status quo where the balloon payment is made by the business at the time that it becomes due. A second option would be to allow deferral of that balloon payment over a five-month period. So they would basically be allowed to make, uh, $1,000 installments over the next five months until that loan was repaid. Uh, and a third would be if, if a business was truly struggling and, and just felt that was, uh, going to be impossible to make, uh, any payments at this point, would be to defer the term for another 12 months, and at which point we would charge 3% interest on that balance, and then basically allow those to carry forward to 2022. So those were the three options that were, uh, recommended for the $5,000 loans that are coming due now. Uh, we also made loans of $10,000 that were two-year terms and carried a 3% interest rate. Um, so we had two solutions there. Uh, one would be, again, these won't be coming due for another year, but to just allow that balloon payment to be made at maturity. Uh, second would be to allow for prepayment installments to be made, and that would be something that the Treasurer's Office would work out with the borrower, uh, to allow them to start paying off those loans earlier than, uh, the final end date, and that might be a little easier for many businesses to kind of plan for and, and fund. So those are the two, uh, types of loans that we're talking about, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that recommendation. I know, uh, Treasurer Markowski is on as well, and as I said, we've been talking in conjunction, um, about how best to do this, and these, these seem to be the most logical and most business-friendly ways to, to kind of help these businesses along. And then at the bottom of that memo, there is a motion that, uh, Treasurer Markowski created that would basically spell out the steps, um, if the board is willing to, to take that up today.
Thank you, Brennan. Alderman Davis.
Thank you. Thank you, Brennan. Um, I think for us that sat there, well, we were able to sit there, um, and see the folks that were coming in, uh, to obtain these loans, and, um, to have an opportunity to speak with some of the business owners or owners last year who sought some assistance and were so grateful, um, for those, and we were grateful because those businesses were able to continue in the city of Rutland. So, um, I, I, I've really seen, um, what the Biop, uh, money has done for these businesses and continues to do, and, and, um, I thank you for all your hard work and effort on this, and with that, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
The motion is to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Uh, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 So I'll move the motion, Mr. Chairman, for debate. Um, so I'll move to authorize the IRA to work with borrowers and coordinate with the city treasurer and city attorney to modify the loans from the Business Incentive Emergency Loan Fund on a case-by-case basis, using any of the repayment options outlined above, and to further authorize the mayor to sign all related documents on the city's behalf.
Second. All right, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Um, I will now open up for discussion, debate, or questions. Alderman Talbot, I saw your hand before. The suspension of the rules. I didn't know if you still had a comment, question?
No, I was just going to move the motion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have comment, question, thoughts? Alderman Neary.
Yeah, just a quick, uh, question for Brennan. Um, was there a cap on this program? I know you said we had 16 totaling $140,000. Were, was, were there more funds available? Um, and some folks didn't, uh, reach out for those, or was that the kind of the limit?
Well, we had a number of rounds where we went through, and we ended up basically with the amount of money that we had to loan loaned out.
Got it. Thank you.
Are there additional questions, comments, discussion? If I could, real quick, Brennan or Mary, um, this looks good. I guess the question I have is the repayment for the two-year term, $10,000 loans. This, to me, makes sense for where we are right now, but would there be an opportunity to revisit this if COVID dragged on longer than expected? Or the, or the impact stretched out? Uh, I'm just wondering, you know, are people who have this loan, if prepayments don't work for them because they're still, you know, struggling to get by? You know, are you considering revisiting that in the six months or so?
Yeah, I don't know if Mary would like to speak to that specifically. I mean, I think, I think the best outcome we can, uh, have right now is to be flexible with these. So certainly if we get to the, uh, at this time next year in those two-year, uh, loans, and there weren't as many two-year loans, and so were 5,000, but if we are talking to those businesses and they're expressing concern that they might not be able to make that balloon repayment, even with the preemptive installments, um, I think this is a conversation we would bring back to the board at that point, specifically to those, to those $10,000 loans. Right now, again, the, the terms are not going to come due for another 14 months or so, so I think we have a little time flexibility there.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Grusso, I believe I saw your hand.
Yeah, I kind of changed my mind, but, but we're going to see a lot of this. I kind of expected it when we did this, uh, way back when or whatever. It's not straightening out. There's, there's still a lot of hurt out there, so, you know, we have to be expecting it, but we have to be considerate. Um, uh, I know I did one, um, a PPP that I think the congressman was talking about, and there were a lot of rules. Like I couldn't take any pay, no owners of the company could take any pay for it and, uh, from it, and, uh, I thought that was fair. I just paid my employees, and, uh, it kept my company going for a while, but, um, I also know there's, there's a lot of people. I know a waitress hasn't worked in over a year and, um, probably going to lose her house, and, uh, you know, there's a lot of people within this that we gotta, you know, we gotta be lenient and helpful, and I think this is a great, great first step, and if we got to make another step, we're here to do that. Uh, so I certainly support the motion, and I'm glad Brennan presented this to us, and I'm, I'm willing to work with him. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grusso. Any additional questions, comments, discussion? If not, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Brennan, we have you up again. Biop Forgivable Loan Agreement, page three of the packet.
Great, thank you. Um, so this is another Biop loan. Uh, if you may recall, in October, we had the first of our two three-year, uh, forgivable loans come due, and, uh, the IRA recommended and the board approved the, um, forgiveness of those two, to those two businesses. Uh, in the end of this past month, we had the three-year term for Rutland Beer Works come due, and we received a final report from that business, and the IRA believed that they had met all of the obligations that they had made under those terms, which were, uh, hiring obligations and some investment in the business. Um, the business reports that throughout the, uh, periods that we've, we've gone through, they have, uh, actually started out slow but are, are doing very well right now, which was very positive. Um, so they're brewing for, uh, themselves and actually for other labels as well out of that facility. Uh, so the recommendation of the IRA to the Board of Aldermen would be to make that a forgivable loan uh, to the business, so it would not be repaid, uh, based on the terms of the original agreement. And then that last sentence there in my memo, uh, was some language that the city attorney had crafted, which, uh, would request that the board authorize the mayor to notify the borrowers and the treasurer that the loans have been forgiven, uh, by the vote tonight, if you so choose.
Alderman Talbot.
Uh, I would move to authorize the mayor to notify the borrowers and treasurer that the loans have been forgiven by a vote on today's date.
Uh, we just have to suspend the rules first.
We have to suspend the rules.
Right. I'll move to suspend the rules. My apologies.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend. It has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Talbot had motion to move that the Board of Aldermen, otherwise the mayor, to notify the borrowers and treasurer that the loans have been forgiven by vote of state if we so choose. Do you have a second?
Second.
Alderman Gill. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brennan.
Thank you very much.
We have Barbara Spalding. Okay, municipal code and policies. This is pages four, 11, packet.
Good evening, this is.
Oh, there you are.
Yep, um, I just, um, will add, uh, to my memo that the city's been very fortunate that they have received several awards from the Vermont Community Development Program, and with those awards come responsibilities and requirements, including that the city adopts certain municipal codes and policies. And they were last voted and approved in 2019 when the whistleblower protection was added. Recently, the, um, not texting while driving policy was added to that list, and tonight we're asking that the Alderman once again approve those municipal codes and policies as listed.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend, and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Go ahead.
Request that President Wickham from the City of Robin, Board of Aldermen, uh, signed the, um, on behalf of the city to re-adopt the revised MP1, um, rules as presented and allow the chair, yeah, allow the chair to sign on behalf of the board, and allow us to proceed with several recently awarded BCP grants as requested by Barbara Spalding.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate or question? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Barbara, we still have you. Rutland County Parent Child Center. This is pages 12 through 14 of the packet.
Yes, thank you. So, um, in addition to my memo that I sent you, I just want to say that we are finally in a position to receive the funding that was awarded for this project back in 2016, was also enhanced in 2017 due to some environmental issues at the property that needed to be remediated. Attached in your packet were forms, PM1, which allows the mayor to sign the grant agreement, and PM4, which assigns grant administration to the IRA. And, uh, we are requesting tonight that you take this up and approve, um, both forms with the chair's signature on behalf of the full board.
Motion to suspend the rules.
The motion is suspended. Alderman Gillam seconded. Would all those in favor of suspending the rules please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Authorize the president of the Board of the City of Rutland. Authorize the president of the Board of the City of Rutland to sign on behalf of, I'm trying to think of where here. On behalf of the Board of Aldermen, the above resolution of uh uh to designate a public agency, I don't know, Form PM four for uh, for the, what is it, for the Robin County Parent Child Center, right?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So.
That's good.
It's been seconded. Thank you. So a motion and it has been seconded. Um, is there any discussion or debate on this issue? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Sorry. This is Brennan. I just wanted to make sure that uh, that that motion included also the mayor signing the grant agreement. I wasn't clear.
Yes, so the motion would be to authorize
Him too.
Both my, and the mayor to sign the grant agreement on behalf of the city.
Great, thank you.
And real quick, uh, those opposed? I didn't hear anyone. Perfect, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Up next, we have Sarah Kelly, zoning administrator. Sale of city-owned property, pages fifteen and sixteen of your packet.
Great, uh, thank you. Good evening. Uh, we have three properties that we recently put out for sale to the public, and um, the committee has met and has recommendations for, for you on each of the properties. Um, Alderman Wickman, would, do you want to take them um, one at a time or for me to present all three and then you'll make your motions? What works best from your perspective?
I think likely to take one at a time if we could.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Okay. Alright, so I'll start with thirty Lincoln Avenue. Um, as I described in the memo, each of these properties does uh, came into the city's hands through the tax sale process. At the time of the tax sale, there were not any, um, no one was meeting the minimum bid on these properties, so um, they ended up in the city's hands. Um, but as we uh know, the um, real estate situation has turned around quite significantly, and things are moving fast in terms of property sales. So the recommendations from the um committee reflect that, and you'll see that um, the offers are quite hu- much higher than they have been in the past. So thirty Lincoln Avenue, the prospective purchaser that was um being recommended by the committee is Karen Chaffey. Uh, she submitted plans um to fully restore the house. She intends to maintain the two units that are there um and create high rental property close to downtown. It's um, kind of what her goal is. Um, she's offering twenty-three thousand dollars and anticipates investing an additional hundred and ten thousand dollars into the property over the next year. So um, if the board um is interested in making a decision on that tonight, there is language uh for a motion on the backside or on the second page of the memo. I'm happy to answer any questions about this property um and the other offers and whatever would help you to be in best informed.
Alderman Clifford?
Believe we have to suspend the rules, is that correct?
Yes.
From mail, make that motion.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 And those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Clifford?
I'd authorize the sale of thirty Lincoln Avenue to Karen Chaffey for the purchase price of twenty-three thousand dollars pursuant to six-two of the Rutland City Charter and to further authorize the mayor to sign all sale-related documents.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions on this motion? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, should I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, one-nineteen Park Avenue is the next property that, under discussion. Um, in this case, the uh zoning is single-family residential uh per state statute and um our bylaws, which have to follow state statute. Um, single-family homes can have an accessory unit um within it, and it does not have to be a particular family member or anything of that nature that can live within it. There's just um restrictions to the size and the number of bedrooms and things of that nature. So, this person's plan, John Janowski, he's planning full rehab of the property. Um, it was, uh, already had a second unit in it, and he's going to renovate it to live in the house, which is one of the things that is necessary for something to have an accessory unit. And then um, and then rehab the accessory unit as well and make that available for rental. Um, so that's uh his plan. He's a um, uh, go-getter. He's a really young guy in his early twenties that's, that's uh trying to make this work for himself. So the offer is for twenty-one thousand five hundred. Um, the way he calculated his intended investment was uh cost out of pocket being between forty and fifty thousand, and then his own labor on top of that. Um, estimated timeframe for completion is twelve to fifteen months. And again, there's uh language on the second page if necessary.
So I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Right, we have a motion to suspend. It has been seconded. Would all those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
So I will move for the sale of one-nineteen Park Avenue to John Janowski for the purchase of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars pursuant to six dash two of the Rutland City Charter and to further authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that I believe the neighbors are doing a happy dance around this house. Because this house enormous drug house at the time. Um, the, the feds took the house and gave it to the city of Rutland at some point. And um, most of the homes that were affected by those, the drug sales on Park Avenue have been rehabbed. Their owner occupied. This is kinda one of the last to go, so hallelujah.
Alright, so we have a motion and it has been seconded. Is there any other discussion, debate, questions? Alderman DePoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as we were talking about the buy-up loans and stuff like that, it just kinda came to my thought process that if somebody's gonna be renting out a portion of their home, I, it's assume I'm assuming that they would be renting out that um connected apartment uh quite possibly to help pay their rent, um, maybe to make a little bit of money, renovations, that sort of thing, pay themselves back for the investment that they're putting into that uh, the house. And as Alderman Davis says, I mean, hallelujah on that. But it would be interesting if we as a board could kinda look into, and maybe with Brennan's assistance and um, you know, even Tara on that too, as to how we might be able to assist. I mean, I know we're selling something at um a lowered cost than what it might be on the open market, but the open market um really didn't want a house like this. So I'm just kinda thinking if, maybe we don't call it buy-up, but maybe we call it something else, but some kind of like a, a little bit of a loan uh type of program to help people like this that are trying to rehab the blight, the blighted properties that are out there. Um, and you know, at some point, if they are really good about how they've uh rehabbed these old houses um and made them much more presentable in the community, uh, we have some kind of a loan forgiveness at the end of that, once they apply for it and uh go that direction. But um, just something I'm thinking about as, as we're talking about this, so uh, maybe we can keep that in mind and make a motion at a later um, as we talk.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Are there any other thoughts, questions, discussions? If not, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Um, Tara, we've got one more.
Alright, great. Uh, so the last one is seventy-seven South Main Street. It um, some of you may be familiar with the fact that seventy-five South Main Street had a, a pretty significant fire in it um a while back, and there was some damage done to seventy-seven South, South Main Street in that process, um, just to the exterior primarily. Um, but uh, the house did go uh through the tax sale process, uh, as has seventy-five South Main Street. Um, and at this point, seventy-five South Main Street does have a bidder on it, um, so I don't expect it to come into our program. But um, this, this project, this property went to tax sale earlier than the seventy-five, so here it is. Okay, um, so the um prospective purchaser that's being recommended is Ryan Walton. He's someone that um has a handful of rental properties in the city. Um, is known to the building department for um doing a good job, um, always gets his permits, uh, seems to maintain them well. He is uh, he would, he would renovate and maintain the two units that are already part of this rental property. Um, and his intent is to rent the unit to people that are referred to him through the homeless prevention program, section eight, and the CARES program. So he's looking to provide affordable housing um as a private landowner. Um, his renovations uh are extensive and should uh be what the uh property needs. The offer amount is ten thousand dollars. The anticipated investment is thirty thousand of hard costs um plus his own labor. And his estimated timeframe for completion is one to one and a half years.
Mr. President, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend and it has been seconded. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
I'll uh make the motion authorize the sale of seventy-seven South Main Street to Ryan Walton for the purchase price of ten thousand dollars pursuant to the six-two of the Rutland City Charter and further authorize the mayor to sign all sale-related documents.
Second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions? Alderman Gillum?
Yeah, um, I think this is a great idea, but I'm concerned about the house next door. This guy puts all his money in it and makes it look really good, but you still got the eyesore next door. So what is our plan to deal with that house next door in seventy-five South Main Street?
Yep, um, so at the tax sale recently, it was sold to um someone who appears to be a very reputable um person, has a history of, of uh maintaining properties well. He's, it is in the redemption period, so we need to wait to the end of redemption period for him to take ownership and start his renovations.
Okay.
But that is the current um status.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Alright, I have Alderman Russo followed by Alderman Davis.
Yes, uh, Sarah Kelly, uh, when did some of these people make their anticipated investment uh projections? Uh, you got an idea like a month ago, two months ago?
Yeah, our application period closed uh the end of February, so that would be when um they were making their anticipated. Uh, that's when they filled out their applications.
Alright, well, good, 'cause, 'cause uh I was busy doing something here while um Alderman DePoy was talking. We really gotta stand behind these guys because, you know, once you came to us and, or somebody did and asked us to extend their, their construction time, 'cause I, am I right? There's like a period of time they've gotta get these places finished. Um,
Right.
Back then, I'm not a builder, but back then, I know from puttering around with things, you could buy a sheet of four-by-eight plywood for about twenty dollars. It's sixty-four ninety-eight at Home Depot right now. Um, uh, building materials have absolutely gone to the roof. So my point is, is if, if somebody predict, predicted to spend, say, forty to fifty thousand, i- i- you know, projecting it at twenty-five dollars a sheet of plywood, and they're now looking at sixty-five, that's gonna eat up their investment. So I think Alderman DePoy is right. We gotta kinda be here for these guys if they, if they need some help or something, 'cause that's gonna blow their projections right out of the water if, if the piece of plywood's three times, you know, more than they, they, were you guys with me? It's gonna cost them three times more than what they, when they projected. That's gonna change their numbers. That forty to fifty thousand could be ninety to, to a hundred and fifty thousand just on plywood alone. So that's, that's why I'm just mentioning that, you know? Um, us with the board need to watch, 'cause I don't know what's happened to it with building supplies. But they say a two-by-six used to be six dollars. It's somewhere around uh, around thirty-five dollars right now. So just kinda on the lookout. I'd love to see these guys finish these and get them done and, and get them paying higher taxes and beautify the neighborhoods. But they're up for a hurdle here 'cause the materials have gone to the roof, so just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Russo. Uh, Alderman Davis and Alderman Talbot.
So, uh, Tara, if you know, uh, with the CARES program, um, um, and the homeless prevention program, so do these um individuals or family unit or whatever, um, are they there? Can they be there for a long period of time, or is there more of a, a turnover rate or after a certain time? Um,
Hmm.
Program by any chance? You know, would there be some stability, I guess, in the unit is what I'm trying to find out?
Yeah, so I, with the homeless prevention program and section eight, there certainly is some stability. I think um, the homeless prevention program works with home, with landlords. So basically, um, a landlord creates a, a relationship with the homeless prevention center. They refer a family that feels appropriate, but then the landlord then keeps an eye out. If things start to go south, they reach back out to the families prevention program to see if there's any intervention that could be provided to the family in terms of helping them um be good renters and be good tenants, um, rather than move toward eviction. So it's meant to create stability. And then section eight, um, is the same. You know, there's quite a lot of inspection and um paperwork that's involved with section eight to, to certify a unit to be able to be um, uh, occupied by someone that's using that funding program. So in that case, um, there, you know, it's, it could be not lack of stability due to just who the individual was. But um, in general, once someone's got a section eight, they tend to keep it. 'Cause there's a long waiting list to uh get back on there. CARES program, I know less about. I apologize for that.
That's, that's okay. That, that gives me a good picture. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alderman Talbot.
Yes, I was just curious if there's any issue for the city if um the buyer's anticipated investment doesn't cover all of the development plans. Looking at seventy-seven South Main, the thirty thousand anticipated investment, seems like it might cover about two or three of the things on the list, but not all of them.
Mm-hmm. Right, so again, he was um not calculating his own labor, that he, he was really talking about materials in that case, which gets a little confusing on the application. So um, if you consider that, if he's discounting his labor, then um, the units are actually fairly clean. Despite the fact that it went through the tax sale process, the um, it's in reasonably good shape. And uh, the electrical work, for example, had already started, and, and there's not any trash to get rid of or anything of that nature. So anyway, um, from our perspective, it has to, um, they have to show that they've made significant investment, and that's tracked through our building permit and um, um, certificate of occupancy process. So if the city, if my, well, in this case, myself now, but the zoning administrator and the building inspector don't need to sign off on that at the end of it to say that it, it appears it's met the um goals of the, of the program and what they had said their development plan was, if we don't sign off on it, then there, there's a, sort of this um cloud on the deed, because part of our sale includes a deed restriction that says they can't resell or lease the property unless we sign off on it. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions? If not, we have a motion and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, thank you, Tara.
Alright.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Okay, up next, we have Treasurer Markowski. February Treasurer's Report, and this was emailed to all of us. Treasurer Markowski.
Okay, thank you. Um, hi, everyone. Uh, I did include the February report for informational purposes as we're already into February, uh, into April and looking at the third quarter, which and looking at the third quarter, which we really will look in greater detail at the third quarter numbers and where we look as we go into the end of the fiscal year. So I did not prepare a separate analysis of it, but I, for highlights, I did wanna note the cash balance that you see at the end of February is, is high, showing the, uh, post collection, and also includes three and a half million that we then pay to the, to the school quarterly. So, um, I think the balance is roughly eight million, so three and a half million of that goes to the school early March. Um, also wanted to point out, um, really in the general fund, we're on target for expenses, revenues are on target. Um, I did want to point out, uh, in the water and sewer fund, the sewer fund, we see some marked improvement there because in working with the engineers, we're getting reimbursed for some of those projects that we've been spending some money on. So that, that fund has had, uh, uh, negative balance, uh, almost close to two million last, for the last period, so some real improvement there, so I wanted to point that out. And when you're looking at the water and sewer funds, you're only seeing two quarters of billing there in those funds, so, um, so I present this to you, uh, really as a receipt and file, but if you have specific questions or?
Are there any questions?
I'll move to receive and place on file. Second.
Motion to receive and file, Alderman Gillum, second. Uh, all those in favor of receiving and filing, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer Markowski, you are up again, just for year twenty, financial audit reports for the city and the IRA. This was also emailed.
Okay, so this is the final, uh, report for FY twenty from the auditors, and, um, I have, I always, we always post this on the city website, so it's available to the public or anyone looking to, uh, to see the city financials. Um, we send it to the bond bank, to USDA borrowing, there's several that we forward this on to and upload it for the grant, uh, reporting. Uh, so in this one, I mean, there's a lot of material here, so I would, um, ask that have this referred to committee, and we'll have, um, Fred Duplessis from Sullivan Powers come in and answer some questions for the board, discuss the findings, um, and really go through detail, any questions that you have.
Alderman Davis.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to refer to the finance committee.
Second.
Second.
Motion to refer, and it has been seconded. Any discussion, debate?
If I may, just for the newer members of the board, um, the audit that is done yearly is the audit that is done for the board of Alderman. Okay, so we, the, the auditors work for the board. We have every opportunity to meet with them without administrative people present, if you so choose. So just so that you're aware of that. Um, and I, I'd like to congratulate Mary and the administration again for having a, uh, a nice, clean audit.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to refer, and that has been seconded. There's no other discussion, debate, or questions. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much, Treasurer Markowski, is that it for you?
That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Uh, before we move on to reports of standing committees, I do have the tallies for the, the votes earlier, so I will read through them, if you just bear with me for a second. Up first, we have Clerk Heck. Uh, the vote goes as follows, ten in favor, zero opposed, uh, one absent. Congratulations, Clerk Heck.
Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent Peters, the vote goes as follows, ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Uh, Kim, there you are, congratulations. And then finally Attorney Blumer, the vote goes as follows, five in favor, five against, one absent. Attorney Blumer, I don't see you any longer, but welcome back and congratulations. All right. So we are now moving on to reports of standing committees. We have public safety, Alderman Davis, fire truck purchase, and you emailed it out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, uh, the public safety committee met March thirty-first at five-thirty PM. Members present were Alderman Savage, Clifford, Mary, Franco, and myself as chair. Other members present were President Whitcomb, Alderman Russo, Gillum, Doganis, and I apologize, I've gotta practice your name, Talbot, Mary Laird, Chief Lovett, and Treasurer Markowski. The topic was the replacement of engine three pumper truck. Chief Lovett discussed the issue with the engine, which was purchased in two thousand and four, and the damage was noticed in sometime of August of two thousand and twenty, which was due to a frame issue. The cost repair would be approximately two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Currently, due to the loss of the vehicle, Rutland Town has been assisting with coverage. The loss of the vehicle from the existing fleet could affect our ISO rating, impacting the insurance rates within the city. The chief spoke to the needs of this vehicle and, as it is used as backup for coverage for the city and for mend and coverage. The use of the fire equipment fund was discussed, which generates approximately two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars yearly. Members shared concerns of draining the fund due to the fact that we are having to replace this engine early with other needs that would be coming due for year two thousand and twenty-six. The treasurer spoke regarding taking the total amount due from the fund and saving the taxpayers around thirty-five thousand dollars in interest, or doing a lease agreement that we currently have in place with a new tower truck to protect the integrity of the fund. Many board members spoke in support of this lease agreement. The chief was looking to waive the normal bid process, as if he went through some known vendor, vendors, he could save the taxpayers around twenty-five thousand dollars. He was able to look at some, uh, bids that were sent and recommended that Ferrari with a price not to exceed four oh four seven five four. There would be, this would be a bare-bones truck, no furrows, and any existing equipment on the engine three would be salvaged. The treasurer was to get to the board different scenarios for leasing years and annual payments to consider. The motion out of committee was to approve the request using a lease agreement as Ferrari as the vendor, and the motion passed four to one, and I so moved.
And I saw a second from Alderman Gillum.
Right.
The motion has been,
As I know, if you know, Mr. Chairman, um, we were kind of, we needed more information to solidify this motion, so that was kind of the motion coming out of committee. Um, in speaking with, um, the city treasurer, she emailed out to us three different options that I think we should probably, um, at this point, consider. The first one was a seven-year rate at two-point-two-nine percent with an annual payment of sixty-two thousand four ninety-six and a total interest of thirty-seven four seven two. A ten-year rate of two-point-five-nine percent with an annual payment of forty-five thousand nine hundred and sixteen with a total interest of fifty-nine one sixty, and a twelve-year rate of two-point-six-nine with an annual payment of thirty-nine four forty-four with a total interest of seven-three-three-two-eight. So I'll just put that before the board, um, because the motion was to consider options for the lease payments. Or I'll put that before the treasurer to speak to either way.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Treasurer Markowski, did you wanna speak to any of this?
I will, because, um, I've worked with the chief a little bit, um, on this. He had the vendor in, uh, city hall on Friday reviewing the specs for the truck and, um, also in contact. The chief had been working out some lease arrangements at, at the same time that I was, trying to get a best, the best, uh, lease program for the city, so based on their discussions on, um, Friday, the, the price went up a little bit, 'cause we, uh, the radio that we had hoped to move from engine three to the new engine three really, uh, wasn't, and the chief can speak to this, but, uh, so that price went up from the four hundred projected to four-ten, or, uh, but anyway, in talking with the leasing company there, the rate, we were able to, the price went up a little bit, but the, the rate goes down a little bit. So, um, in a seven-year scenario, you're actually, the total interest is thirty-four thousand. So I, I wanna note that, um, and the chief can speak to changes in the specs. So we're really like, I don't see in this fund going too long-term with the lease, even though I've given you those, uh, the cash position is pretty solid, um, and I don't know that we really want to consider incurring additional interest expenses there. So, yeah, the cash purchase, which we could do, it's going to, you know, the balance is gonna be a bit lower, maybe, in, in some years than we want, but keeping in mind that we have a steady revenue stream, and when we get to two thousand and twenty-seven, we're likely going to be looking at another lease option, so that I think the cash in the fund is gonna remain pretty healthy throughout. So, um, I, I feel like you have either the cash purchase option or the lease option, and I would recommend the, the, the shorter term, um.
So if I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll just remind the, the committee and the board that the, um, first option was to take the total amount from the equipment replacement fund and save thirty-five thousand dollars worth of interest, that was the initial, um, discussion. And then the committee felt that they wanted to, oh, protect the integrity of the fund more by just doing the lease agreements. So, um, for debate purposes, I will put a motion on the floor that we choose the seven-year rate, um, of two-point-two-nine percent, and I know, Mary, that this is going to adjust a little bit, but the annual payment of sixty-two four ninety-six. So I'll move that.
All right, we have a motion, and it has been seconded by Alderman Gillum. Is there any discussion, debate, questions on this? Alderman Russo.
I, I seconded that, 'cause I, I just wanna ask why, um, I'm trying to find Sharon's, uh, I, I said I'd leave it on my phone, so I would have it. Sharon, uh, why wouldn't you go with the longer payment? 'Cause the truck lasts like, like fifteen to twenty years. Um, why wouldn't we go with the longer, uh, payment, payment time on that?
Uh, well, uh, uh, Mary, uh, the treasurer,
It would make the payment lower.
Right, it would make the payment lower, but I think that what the treasurer just got through talking about was the fact that, um, the fund could sustain this rate, we'd be through it at, in seven years, um, and we would pay less interest.
Okay, well, all right, I, I support the motion if you guys are happy with it, but I just, I'm a favorite of long and low with the payments, but, all right, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Alderman DePoy.
I guess just more of a rhetorical question here, Mr. President. Does anybody find it kind of ironic that when the rates go down, the price goes up? As Mary just stated, we're paying a little bit more for the truck and a little bit less in interest, but don't, you know, it, it just, it really boggles my mind that when the rates go down, they wanna keep the payments the same so they can make some more money, it's just, it's,
I, um, would like to speak to that, because, um, well, that in fact is true. We are looking at two different financing companies for it, so the rates are coming from two different sources. Uh, so I just wanna point that out.
Thank you, Treasurer Markowski. Chief Lovett.
Can't hear you, Billy.
Let's PM you. No, it's your microphone selection.
How's that, any better? It is better, okay, I can't hear anything else, but, um, just to, uh, give you an idea of what was going on with the price. Uh, my original charge was to keep the price in the area of about four hundred thousand, because that's what we were hoping we could support with the fire equipment fund. Um, after opening all the bids, we found out that only one was at four hundred and four. After the fact, um, I was in contact with the radio, uh, folks, and we found out that the radios, um, in the truck were over twenty years old, and they advised not to transfer them to the new, uh, truck. So, uh, if any, I know a few people have mentioned, they were asked about the price increase. Uh, the price increase is actually so that we could include the cost of the radios in the, uh, purchase.
So, uh, chief, if I may, Mr. Chairman, chief, if I may, could you give us, 'cause we had a price of four oh four seven fifty-four, so could you give me that new price, please?
Yes, um, um, it should be four hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents.
So Alderman Dungeons and Alderman DePoy.
Uh, chief, I have a question for you, um, kinda in the same vein of Alderman Russo. If we look at the way a lot of, um, municipalities are moving towards asset management when it comes to big purchases like these and leveraging those lease programs, um, if you were to, if we were to go with the lease route on this, and then moving forward, continue to do leases on vehicles down the line, would that help you budget and maintain and manage the fleet and other large expenses better by being able to predict those payments and predict that out, that output every year?
Well, one of the, one of the beauties of the fire equipment fund has been that it's basically attached to the tax rate, um, in the grant list, and also the subsequent contract, so, um, I know, uh, some of you have asked, uh, in the past is, would it cost a, uh, taxpayer an increase in their tax bill, you know, earmarked to the fire truck purchase? And it's actually rolled into the whole package, so it, it is a separate fund. As far as, um, the purchase over time, um, as, uh, Treasurer Markowski points out, um, one of the things we've always tried to do is be as frivolous we can with the taxpayers' money. Um, and so we have never entered into a lease prior to the purchase of our tower. Um, obviously, that, that truck's very expensive, it's close to a million and a half dollars. So we're on the hook for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. Um, and, and that comes out of the fund, and, and so it doesn't, it directly affects all of us, obviously, because this is a, a joint for fire protection. But as far as the day-to-day operation, um, probably the biggest thing that has the impact is unpredictability. I mean, we do everything we can to preserve these pieces of equipment. Um, I, I really had counted on this truck lasting seven years, and as far back as Chief Jones, we had projected, um, you know, all of our purchases. I helped, uh, Chief Jones do it, he did quite a comprehensive plan, and then Chief Larson before me, uh, had some modifications, so, you know, we've been trying to predict, um, and, and I, I treat this money, you know, very carefully. Uh, this is a very great gift from Chief Kuznansky when he set it up with the board's help way back in nineteen sixty-eight. Um, so, you know, I, I tend to agree with, uh, you know, uh, Mary about the fact that, you know, we try to preserve this fund as much as we can. Leasing over a period of time costs the taxpayers money. Um, if, for instance, just using the numbers that she had created, uh, a twelve-year lease, we're spending seventy-three thousand dollars extra to a bank not to keep it in the fund. That would go a long way, um, you know, towards another purchase off in the future. Um, you know, so, uh, I, I suppose it, it is in your hands as the, you know, the, uh, the protectors of this fund. along with Treasurer Markowski to decide how you want to pay for it.
Thank you, Chief.
I had Alderman Deployed, then Alderman Garuso.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Chief Lovett, just so I'm clear on this then, there's not an actual price increase in the truck itself. It's just an increase in the equipment that you're purchasing to go with the truck. And with that, we are looking at paying a little bit of a lower interest rate, keep the payments about the same so that you can purchase the new radio equipment. Is that correct? Does that size it up? And if so, I'm sorry for my earlier statement. It's just that I didn't have that information at the time.
And that's not a problem. It was a very complex thing. Treasurer Markowski was working with her people. I was working with a gentleman that we had worked with on the tower. And so it was getting multiple rates at the time. Coincidentally, we had a lower rate proposed to us through the vendor that had helped us with the tower in the past. And so that's actually where the savings was. Coincidentally, it just happened to almost erase that increase with the cost of the radios.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Garuso, I had you up next.
And the flip side of leasing is if you have 409,000, I believe is the amount of money, and you take it out of the bank and you're no longer earning interest on it, and you pay for that truck, that seven or eight years or whatever, it's not earning interest. So it's kind of the same thing. You may be paying interest as soon as you take it out of the equipment account and it's not earning interest, still the same kind of thing. It's an exchange of dollars. And it may even be, you're making, you're spending less dollars on the lease than you are earning. So that's how you got to look at these. Like I said, I attended a class along my last term on municipal leasing and I learned an awful lot about it. And you really have to sit down and look at that. So I think we're on to something here. And it's an awful big piece of equipment, like Alderman Dunn just said. And it's a great way to eat our cake and still have it too. So thank you very much. That's why I wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Alderman Garuso. Are there any further questions, thoughts, considerations? If I could, oh, sorry, all the woman savage, I didn't see you.
No worries, that's okay. I just have a question. At the end of this seven-year lease, do we then own the fire truck? Or do we have, are we in a situation where we're going to have to lease another vehicle, renew the lease on this one? What happens after the seven-year period?
We keep it.
Yep. Yeah, Oliver, well, our current one, for instance, on the platform, it's a 14-year. On the 15th year, we actually own it outright. In my understanding, if Treasurer Markowski is still on the line, I believe that is the completion date, one year after the term of the loan.
Yes, that would be the plan, to own that vehicle after the seven-year, 10 or 12, or whichever one.
Thank you. There any further questions, discussion, comments? If not, Attorney Blumer, I'm going to turn it over to you really quick because you had some considerations that you would recommend for this motion.
We have, we have a number of motions that Matt has put out. I think we just need to determine, if I may, we just need to determine which lease option we were going to choose to fill in one of your blank spots on your recommended motions.
Yep, correct, yep. Yeah, there's seven motions that I suggested on Friday. And, or six to seven, depending on the board's preference. There's a couple blanks, one for the, for the purchase price and one for the number of years that the lease will be for. So it may make sense, the first two or three are establishing certain findings that I think it should be established before you go ahead with the other motions. So my recommendation would be to establish those, those facts first and then, you know, replace the motion that's on the floor with, with the rest of the motions that I had drafted.
So if I may, just for clarification, because I made the motion for the, to choose the lease for seven years, you're asking me just to withdraw that and to start with motion number one and work our way down?
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
Glad to withdraw that motion then. So if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so-
Second, agrees.
My first motion is to find that the replacement of Engine Three is an emergency purchase for the safety of the city residents.
Second. All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on that motion? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
All right. Alderman Clifford, no, the rest yes. Motion passes.
You're muted, Sharon.
Thank you. Motion to find that the work Chief Lovett has done to gather quotes constitutes a fair and public process, which the board reasonably believes has had the effects of minimizing costs to taxpayers.
Second.
This is what we're talking about by waiting requirement of having to go up for $3,000 or more.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on this motion? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion, I'm going to go to motion four, motion to approve the purchase of the, where Chief Lovett go. So what it's asking me to do is the brand and type of vending engine. So do I just put Ferraro? I'm not sure what to put in there.
Yeah.
To approve the purchase of the brand and type of engine.
Yes, the make of the truck will be Ferrari. And it is an engine.
And I will move that motion.
Second. A motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions on this? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Next is the motion to authorize that said engine be purchased for a purchase price not to exceed $409,938.14 from the funds within the fire equipment replacement fund.
Second. We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
If the lease option is chosen, which it was, my motion is to authorize the leasing of said engine for seven years on the terms presented by the city board.
Second. All right, we have a motion and it has been seconded. Would there be any discussion, debate, or questions? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
And lastly, the motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute as needed any documents necessary to the purchase of the engine consistent with the foregoing motions in a file form approved by the city attorney.
Second. All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. And I believe that is it.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very quickly before we go on to reports of select committees, I did get the final vote in. So the quick recount here, Clerk Hack has been confirmed by 11 votes in favor, zero against. Superintendent Peters has been confirmed with 10 votes in favor, one against. Attorney Blumer has been confirmed with five votes in favor, six against. And those are the final numbers. So we're on now to reports of select committees, of which we have none. Reports of representatives, we have none. Petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication, we have nothing. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing. Unfinished business, is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, it's new business.
All right, any unfinished business? All right, I'm seeing nothing. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. First thing we have is Edgerton Street Safety Concerns, Kristen Debbie Creed, pages 17 and 18 of your packet. Hope the charter and ordinance-
Second.
We have a motion to move charter and ordinance. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions on this issue? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor of referring to charter and ordinance, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Up next, hands-free device policy, page 19 of your packet.
Would we refer that to like somebody? It doesn't look like it's anything we signed, I read it. Does it look like we refer to a committee or something?
So Barbara, if I could, this is the mayor.
Go ahead.
This has got to do with the grants and the grant agreements and the grant. In order for us to process the grants, we need to initiate this hands-free driving policy in order for Barbara to be able to go forward with those grants and be able to receive that money. So I think that that's what this is.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, did we not do that when we authorized? That's the hands-free twice. So when, when we did the, when we did it on-
Codes and policies, Sharon.
I was trying to find it on my agenda.
I believe, hi.
To sign.
This is Barbara, and I believe the MP1 form says that the city will create a hands-free policy. So we're following up the HR, Jody, put together the hands-free policy based on the MP1 form.
We already did that form, Barbara, right?
Yes, but you're now, we're now asking you to adopt the official, the official policy.
I'll suspend the rules.
Second.
Second. We have a motion suspended, it has been seconded. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, Alderman Talbot.
Yeah, I'll move to adopt this hands-free device policy as written.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it has been seconded to adopt this hands-free device policy. Are there any questions, comments, debate on? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're still under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Is there any new business to come before? Alderman Davis.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, with the financial, 2020 financial, schedule a committee meeting for April 14th at 5:30 to meet with the auditors of Sullivan and Powers.
All right, just so I have it right, Alderman Davis, I was getting some bad feedback off a caller. April 14th, 5:30, finance meeting to discuss the audits.
Correct.
Excellent, that's a twos. Thank you. All right, is there other new business? Alderman Dungeons.
I have a couple things, Mr. President, that I'd like to bring up for possible motions. The first one is reviewing ordinances specifically in, with the intent of looking at the shopping cart situation. I recognize that the current fees in the ordinance documentation looks to be relatively, it's actually in the charter, it looks to be relatively low in comparison if we could apply fees to those types of incidents. And there's also a hefty one-year potential penalty that we could apply of prison, which I think is a little excessive for ordinance violations in the city. And I'd like to make a motion to refer a review of that segment of the charter to committee.
Second.
All right, so we have a referral charter and ordinance committee to the shopping cart. Is there any discussion or debate on this? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of referring this to the charter and ordinance committee, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I don't know. All right, those opposed? Motion carries with nine yes and one I don't know. For the new members, I should apologize. This is coming around again. When I was on the board before, I was on charter and ordinance and the shopping carts, I got trashed by the shopping carts the first time around. So beware. Alderman Dungeons, did you have something in addition to?
Yeah, yes, I did, if that's okay.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, I have another one. In discussions regarding the fire truck, so this motion won't regard the fire truck, but in discussions regarding the fire truck, Treasurer Markowski brought up the fact there are some avenues we could look at as far as saving, some cost-saving methods in regards to refinancing eligible debt. With the interest rates being as low as they are today, I think it'd be, it behooves the city to review what debt is eligible first and then what are refinancing options for that existing debt is to see if we can get a lower interest rate and save the taxpayers some money.
Second. Did you put it, did he refer to-
Yeah, I'll refer to the finance committee, sorry.
Second.
I apologize.
I still second it, no matter where it goes.
All right, so we have a motion that has been seconded to refer to finance committee to discussion of refinancing debt. Is there any discussion, question, comment on this motion? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
Can I, it's Mary, and I just wanted to add, I'm happy to have it in Finance Committee, but I have a leasing company currently looking at the fire truck and the Fathom leases, both of those, because they, that Fathom lease is carrying a pretty significant interest rate. So I may have some additional information at the finance meeting.
Great. Thank you for that, Mary.
Yeah. Alderman-Nearay.
Thank you, President Wickham. In light of Tom's, Alderman DePoy's idea, I would like to make a motion to refer to Community Economic Development Committee to, a way to determine the feasibility of establishing a new program to fund the improvement of owner-occupied apartment buildings in Rutland City.
So I'll second that. And I just wanted to talk about that real quickly.
Motion has been seconded. I would say you are up.
So Devin, what I'm thinking on this too is, is it was, it was brought up to me here in the course of the thoughts tonight, is possibly linking that with some of the money that's being referred to the Finance Committee from, from Congressman Welch, you know, well, it's not, not from him, but from the stimulus package that he was talking about, as that money becomes, starts coming in, maybe in the Finance Committee and coupling that with Community and Economic Development, you know, possibly, that could be our funding mechanism for something like that. Obviously, we'd have to put something together to form that kind of a program, but just kind of thinking forward here as to where we would get the money for something like that. And that's a possibility right there. So when that comes into finance, let's talk about it at that point.
Alderman Davis.
So I'll support this going to committee, but I don't support it that it's apartment houses and apartment houses only, because I think there are folks in, who are in single-family residential homes that are making choices as well, whether they're maintaining their property or paying taxes or whatever. But I also don't think we need to reinvent the wheel because we have entities out there who currently do this and who work collaboratively with the city to get it done. So I think we have to be sensitive to that fact, like Neighborhood Works, et cetera, who works with the city, who has done a tremendous job in the Northwest Neighborhood with doing some substantial rehabs. I will not, not use a dime of taxpayer dollars. We don't do that with the buyout. It can't, tongue-in-cheat, it comes from Zabias. Is that taxpayer money? Of course it is, but it's not raised by property tax. So I want to be clear on the record that I will, it's, it's got to be more than apartment houses. It does not come from property generated taxes. And we work with the entities that are already involved.
Thank you. That's Alderman Gillum and then Alderman-Nearay. I'll support this, but I'm going to put a caveat on this. We've been down this road twenty years ago in the Northwest Neighborhood, and we had a program in place, and it worked pretty well because it was owner-occupied facility. So it had to be three units or less, one unit, the owner had to occupy it. So that's how it worked because they were living there and the property was maintained. We got to be sure we're not handing this over to property owners who are not in the facility because it'll, it'll not be taken care of. So I think we need to keep that in mind. Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Alderman-Nearay.
Thank you. I second Alderman Davis's sentiments on that, and I would like to amend the motion to include non-rentals as well. However, I do agree, we should be inviting our partners to this committee meeting, and it really should be fact-finding to start, but I really do think we're on to something. And, you know, I do appreciate the history, but times are, times are changing, so there could be some good opportunities this time around.
Alderman DePoy.
Hey, everyone, I respect all of your opinions on this, but that's why we're referring it to committee to, you know, to discuss this. I don't know if we need to hash it all out tonight. Send it to committee and be done.
All right, so we do have a motion that has been seconded to send it to Committee and Economic Development Committee. Is there any further discussion, debate? If not, with all those in favor of referring this, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Is there any additional new business to come before this board?
I just want to tell you about the time, I've just had the time of my life if I forget to tell you.
Thank you, Alderman-Gurso.
One motion to adjourn. I want to go eat. Been a long night. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman and everybody. Happy Easter.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you. A motion to adjourn has been seconded. With all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, everybody.
Bye-bye.